Come to the September 26, 2022, meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by myself, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Lord, we ask for your wisdom as we make some tough decisions in this meeting. Help us to carefully consider the relevant information that has been gathered. Help us to be innovative as we brainstorm solutions. Help us to wisely evaluate our options, considering the pros and the cons. Help us to be unified in making the best possible decisions and to effectively carry them out. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Myers, will you call a roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Meinzler?
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray?
Make a motion to excuse Mr. Meinzler.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, Mr. Meinzler is excused. Commissioners, do you have before you the minutes of our meeting of September 12, 2022? What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Waddington?
I move that we accept the minutes of the September 12 meeting and dispense from the formal reading.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and your agenda comments.
I'm Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I'd like to talk about the $140,000 grant you have before you for the Pipe Creek War owned by Pat Murray. I have three questions here, and then I have some concerns. The three questions are, is there a sign as a part of this grant? Is there a sign figured in here? Also, is there a bank involved? He's stating here in his paperwork that he's borrowing against his security-based portfolio. That looks a bit risky. I'd like to know how you calculate the grant. I believe you total up all his expenses and then take 10%. I'm not sure if you could confirm that for me. I'd appreciate it. He's got several expenses down here. He's got property acquisition at $275,000. He's got design and permits, pre-development site, $225,000. Shoreline erosion and docks for $359,000. Building design permits and construction, $775,000. Furniture, fixtures, equipment, and landscaping, $166,000. I believe the ED Committee did back out some of that landscaping so they could afford to give him this grant. I have some concerns about how this was done. The guidelines here, there's a page that has financial condition, and he marks off everything in the blank score boxes here. But on the top here, nothing is marked off here. This is what you have to mark off. These are all the documents you have to have in before it goes to the ED Committee to be approved. Now, how's come some people get away with this and others don't? They have to have their documents in. This is called backloading, when you don't have anything marked here and hand it in. Are we just going by his figures that he plugged in, or are we verifying this? Why have guidelines if you don't pay attention to them? I have the last comment is, I'm very concerned about overstuffing the expenses for these grants. These grants are getting out of hand. I think there should be a cap on it. If you're going to have acquisition, maybe cap it at $100,000 or something like that. This is completely out of control because there was another grant for $240,000 that came at the same time this one did, and it had to be tabled because there wasn't enough money in the grant fund. That should have never even come to the ED Committee, but it was advised by the Director, and he said to the Committee, "Just pass it on to the Commissioners. They have to vote on this and let them come up with the money." What are we doing here? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any additional comments regarding the agenda items? Those questions will be addressed hopefully as that legislation comes before us. I am pleased, and we are pleased, to have the swearing-in of firefighter Tanner Reeser by our City Manager. (Inaudible) 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 Chief D'Amico, do you have some background for us?
Yeah. Through you, President Brady. Tanner currently lives in Aliria. He was a member of Carlisle Township prior to getting hired in Sandusky. He has his firefighter one and two fire certifications, and he's a certified EMT. He's starting paramedic school in October, and he enjoys woodworking in his spare time. Congratulations, Tanner, and welcome to the City of Sandusky. (Applause)
We usually require a new hire to speak for about 15 or 20 minutes, but we'll pass on that tonight. You and your brothers can get out of here.
It's great.
And it is not a requirement that your support system there stick around for this entire meeting, so I'll give you 30 seconds to clear the deck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for being here. Congratulations, everybody. Commissioners, do you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation that have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, that motion is approved. We have a public hearing tonight on CDBG 2021 Comprehensive Annual Performance Evaluation. That's going to be conducted by our CDGB Coordinator, Nicole Groen. As this is a public hearing, we will entertain questions from both the Commissioners and from the audience, both verbal and written, at the conclusion of Nicole's presentation.
Thank you. All right, so tonight we are going to go over the 2021 City of Sandusky Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or the CAEP. So just quickly, I'm going to go over the executive summary. I'm going to round the numbers because there's so many numbers in this report. The Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report details the City of Sandusky's accomplishments during the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2021. It shows the achievements towards meeting the goals outlined in City of Sandusky's 2019 to 2023 five-year consolidated plan. For the program year 2021, the City of Sandusky was allocated $760,000 to spend on eligible activities during the period beginning July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. The annual funding is calculated through a formula allocation from the Department of Urban Development, HUD, Housing and Urban Development, HUD, excuse me. Sandusky administered several activities such as public facility improvements, clearance, demolition, and public service. The city also had prior year resources that amounted in $84,000 in entitlement funds and $34,000 in program income, which gave the City of Sandusky a total of $880,000. Of the available funds, $570,000 was spent, which was approximately $65,000, drawn down between July 1, 2021 and June 30, 2022. In addition to the prior year program allocation and prior year resources, the city was awarded COVID funding to be utilized to prepare, prevent, and respond to the issues resulting from the pandemic. The total of that allocation was $622,000. Currently, there is a balance of $350,000. While project eligibility remains the same, the deadlines for spending these funds remain a little different. So just very briefly, the Community Development Block Grant Program has three national objectives. You have to meet low and moderate income persons. You have to benefit them somehow. You have to prevent or eliminate slum and blight, or you have to meet an urgent need. I'm not going to go over this chart in detail, but this is a summary of what I'm going to cover here next. I'm sure this is available after the presentation, if anybody wants a copy. Just very briefly, the categories on the top of these slides are from our consolidated plan, and then it says what action it's accomplishing, and then what we did. So for housing, our action was to provide affordable housing and remove barriers for fair housing. In 2021, the City of Sandusky allocated $10,000 for fair housing activities, and a fair housing consultant was retained. He took 94 calls. The housing consultant also provided residents with housing materials, and he assisted in hosting numerous workshops. Neighborhood stabilization is another goal, and an action for that was to enhance the quality of life for people living in low and moderate income neighborhoods through public investment facilities, improvements, and services, as well as elimination of blight. There were several accomplishments through that goal. The city allocated $320,000 in funding for public facilities, and that included the repave of 11 street segments and the removal of nine dry vaprons. The city also allocated $87,000 in acquisition, which they acquired one unit, and $90,000 some dollars in prior clearance and demolition funds, which resulted in 10 houses being demolished. The City of Sandusky also allocated $100,000 for code enforcement activities, and the city used $94,000 towards those activities. There is a remaining balance that will be carried into 2022. In total, there was 1,500 units that were inspected, which resulted in 756 corrections, a 50% compliance rate. The City of Sandusky also allocated $20,000 for a transit facilities plan, and that is currently underway. Moving on to special needs assistance, the action for this is to promote access to public services for special need populations, generally assumed to be low and moderate income individuals, including but not limited to programs addressing youth and children, seniors, elderly, frail elderly, veterans, and persons with mental, physical, or developmental disabilities, alcohol or drug addiction, AIDS, or other special needs. So during the program year, the City of Sandusky allocated $22,000 to the recreation program for the implementation of the summer parks program, spring and winter break camps for children residing within the city. In total, there was more than 247 people that participated in these programs. During the program year, there was 40,000 that was allocated to the Erie County Senior Center for their Meals on Wheels program, which benefited 152 elderly adults. And the Center of Cultural Awareness was also awarded $10,000 in assisted 13 use in their Proud to Be Me program. The last category is response to COVID, and that is to prevent, prepare, or respond to the coronavirus, to promote safe meal delivery services and assistance to those in need that were impacted by the virus. During the program year, $85,000 of COVID food pantry funds was allocated to several agencies, including Care and Share, Second Harvest. They served 2,000 people. Father's Heart Church served about 1,500 people. Ogo served 1,300, and Victory Kitchen served 8,500. During the program year, there was also some new HVAC equipment that was installed in Firehouse Number Seven, and a pressure washer and trailer was purchased to sanitize equipment for public spaces. Just briefly, for 2021, the City of Sandusky assisted low and moderate income areas of the city. In addition to improving the city as a whole, assistance was made available to persons meeting the CDBG eligibility guidelines for low and moderate income benefit. The City of Sandusky identified six projects that benefited low, moderate income persons citywide, and these included fair housing, public facilities, infrastructure facilities, blight elimination, code enforcement, food assistance. Overall, the city had planned on reaching 80% with that allocation, and we actually did 79%, so very close. This is a map of the CDBG eligible areas, just for reference. Public notice that was in the paper. There were no public comments received. I don't know if anyone has any questions here. I'm going to go back to this chart real fast. I know I said I wasn't going to discuss it, but I am. I just want to go over the percentages complete. Under housing, 112% of the goal was complete, which means we exceeded what we were expecting to do. In public facilities and infrastructure, we completed 94%. In public services and other activities besides low and moderate income housing, we achieved 196%. With building demolition, we achieved 90%. Acquisition, 100%. Through code enforcement, we achieved 64%. Special needs, 83%. And then public service with COVID, 294%. So that is the end of my presentation. If anyone has questions, I think you can ask at this time.
Public, have any questions regarding the public hearing? Commissioners, questions or comments for Ms. Groen?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
I just wondered, why was the code enforcement only at 64%?
I believe because we didn't spend all the funds was part of it. And then that's also calculated based on what inspections are in CDBG areas, so they may not have been all in CDBG areas. Can't really control that portion so much.
Okay. So I noticed there's a benchmark number, and then there's the other number, which gives you the percentage.
Yep. So that was just an estimate.
Okay.
Yeah. So I guess more inspections were done in non-CDBG areas, if that makes sense, than anticipated.
And they don't register if they're not done in a state.
Exactly. We can't use CDBG funds on things that are in CDBG areas.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Housing is, I guess, fair housing is what we've actually focused at $10,000 on. At some point, could you give us the, not today, obviously, the outcomes, what this gentleman did?
Sure.
He spoke for 94 people on various issues. I'd just like to know how that turned out.
Yeah, I have a lot.
Actually, what was he, what kind of problems people have in fair housing in Sandusky, and what exactly we're doing to address it would be worthwhile for that.
Absolutely.
Additionally, and again, you're the expert on what money can be spent on. It looks like we have a lot of money in terms of the housing area for low and moderate income folks. Like, if you just look into whether or not we can provide some kind of assistance for folks that still have lead service lines running water into their homes. And I think I've also asked the planning commission to look at what they can do to move us forward in terms of expectations of folks.
I think that stuff needs to be upgraded, you know? Sounds good.
I'm not sure if it can be done. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments, Commissioners?
Chairman.
Great.
Just one thought. I'm looking at the fake Mr. Klein tonight, and I know there was discussion about us setting some funds aside, and I know there have been some additional funds set aside by Congress to deal with the replacement issue. Just to follow up Mr. Poole's point, I'd sort of like to get a comprehensive look at all those different sources of funding, and just a sense of what it is we might be able to do with that funding in terms of how many houses. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Groen. I'll consider this public hearing closed. Commissioners, we have six items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of the consent items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, will you present the consent agenda items, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, liquor permit transfer for the club patio and garden. Item B, ODOT 2023 bridge inspection agreement. Item C, shoreline park and paper district marina change order number one and final. Item D, 2023 budget amendment number five. Item E, permission to dispose of unneeded items. And item F, accepting 12 parcels for land bank use.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances, resolutions, and requests for liquor permit transfer, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of these resolutions and ordinances, and for the approval of the liquor permit transfer. And as to the resolutions and ordinances pursuant to Section 13 or 14 of the City Charter as designated in the communication.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances, resolution, and request for liquor permit transfer.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Those ordinances, resolutions, and liquor permit transfer are passed. I'll now turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Myers, will you present item number one, please, on the regular agenda?
It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring that a portion of certain property owned by the city located at the southwest corner of East Market Street and Warren Street, Sandusky, and identified as parcel number 56-01383, is no longer needed for any municipal purpose in authorizing and directing the City Manager to enter into an agreement and sell the designated real property to Brian and Amber Stanley, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Just a question for, just a question. We have, we purchased, this is the property we purchased from Mac Iron, correct? Is that that corner property? We bought that property, it was presented as going to become six lots to sell. I mean, I'm very happy with, I'm going to vote for this. This is fine, selling this to these folks, I'm glad they're getting it. But we, this is a third of the property. How are you going to manage to get five out of the last two thirds? What's the game plan, is what I want to know.
Mr. Holliday. Thank you, Commissioner Poole. We looked at a number of different ways to subdivide the property, and retaining this portion of the property for one single family house proved to be the most practical way to divide it. In terms of our plan to maximize the sales price and development out of the remainder of the property, we intend to issue a request for proposals for developers to submit development proposals for this, as well as a large portion of the Sandusky Cabinets property on the other side of Warren Street. Together, those two areas comprise about 1.75 acres in a great location, so we think that there'll be good interest and response to that RFP, and we're looking forward to getting that out as soon as possible.
So if I understand your answer, Mr. Holliday, you're going to, we're going to go to market for competitive bidding and hopefully get a competitive price and drive that number up?
Correct. Competitive price and a competitive proposal. We're under no obligation to accept any of the proposals, but we're excited about what we think will be submitted, and once they've been evaluated, we'll certainly present a recommendation to City Commission for your consideration and hopeful approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I wonder if Mr. Holliday might take a moment, please, to explain the balance of the colors on the chart that's up on the screen. I think I understand what he's referring to, but perhaps you could walk us through where this parcel is, what that color is, and then the other parcels that you were referencing, please.
Yes. Commissioner Brady to Commissioner Murray. This is an area where the city's been actively developing parcels for some time. So you can see two homes here facing Market Street and one lot currently under construction when this photo was taken. Those houses are all just about finished now, representing over $1 million of investment here in the city. What you see in red at the intersection of Market and Warren Street is the portion of the property that we are proposing tonight to sell to the Stanley family. That will leave the remainder of that site, which is shown in orange to the south of the red parcel, there at the intersection of Washington and Warren. When you look on the east side of Warren Street, what you can see there are three new parcels that we intend to create. Those are colored in green. We intend to make those available through a Realtor. We're currently soliciting proposals from Realtors to act as our agent in order to sell these three lots, as well as other developable land bank lots throughout the city. We think using a Realtor will really help us maximize the sales price and shift from what has been primarily a first-come, first-served model to really a highest and best offer model. Once those three green lots are subdivided from the Sandusky Cabinets property, that'll leave the remainder of the Sandusky Cabinets property, which is shown in orange. That totals about 1.11 acres. So the remainder of the Sandusky Cabinets property and the remainder of the Mac Iron property, both shown in orange, are what we intend to offer for a request for proposals. And again, those two sites total about 1.75 acres.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Additional questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington? Yes. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two, please.
Actually, Commissioner Brady, if I could really briefly.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention that the Stanley family is here tonight and that this purchase has been a few years in the making and that Brian has become a very active member. He's the chair of our Public Art and Cultural Commission, as well as the firm that he works for, Schmidt Architecture, has recently relocated back into the city. So I just wanted to bring that up, wanted to say thank you for their interest in the city. But those are the types of citizens that we are attracting back to Sandusky. One, through their involvement as volunteers in the different efforts that the city has. But also, this idea that people want to live, work, and recreate in the same place is really catching on and helping to drive some of that interest. So thank you for your interest in Sandusky.
Thank you, Mr. Whupser. All good points, and I understand that your work location is in the city of Sandusky also.
Yes.
Excellent.
Two blocks away, I saw.
You're quickly becoming a homer.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Myers, you present item number two.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $140,000 through the Economic Development Fund Program to Pipe Creek Wharf LLC in relation to the property located at 2330 River Ave., Sandusky, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pajali.
I would move for the adoption of this ordinance under Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Holliday, I wonder if you can fill in some blanks for us on, I believe there were three questions asked on this particular parcel property.
Yes, certainly, Mr. Chairman. The first question referred to signage, and while the renderings do show the anticipation of signage at this property, those signs have not yet been submitted for permit approval and are not part of the project at this time, although we do anticipate there being signage at this location. In terms of whether or not there's bank financing, the last conversation I had with the developer, he indicated that he was not pursuing bank financing at that time, given the costs of that financing for this type of project. And I know he, the developer is here and may want to expand upon that. And then lastly, in terms of how the grant amounts are calculated, for projects of scale here in the city, which we have traditionally defined as over half a million dollars, the city has typically provided up to 10% of the total project costs for the project. This is really a large-scale investment totaling over $1.8 million here in the city. When the Economic Development Incentive Committee reviewed that, this project, they did consider that some of those costs were for items such as landscaping and acquisition, which we don't typically use to calculate as part of that 10% figure. But when you factor in some of those costs, we're looking at about $1.4 million of investment here in the city that we would typically look at in terms of calculating our 10% assistance level, which brings us to the $140,000 grant amount, which the Economic Development Incentive Committee recommended for approval at their last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday. Questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I just want to be clear, back and forth between the public and what Mr. Holliday said. You do have verification of some sort that, I should say, the Economic Development Committee looked at something that verifies that the 1.6 million actually exists and is not just a line on a piece of paper that says, this is going to cost 1.6. Because what you've given us, I've read, and that's all that's there. It says, cost for these things is this. There's some verification, like bids of some sort or something that justifies it. I just want to be sure they exist, that that exists.
Commissioner Brady to Commissioner Poole. We have verified many of the costs associated with this project, including the construction costs through examination of the construction contract.
Okay.
That this developer has with his contractor. Certainly with these projects, some small portions are estimates at early stages, but the main components of this project have been verified, as well as including the construction contract for the building. A major component, which I think is a really exciting piece of this, the significant investment this developer is taking on in terms of shoreline stabilization, as well as adding 24 boat docks here at the city, which will accommodate new visitors to the city of Sandusky, really capitalize on our waterfront location. So yes, those costs have been verified.
Okay. Additionally, permits are, he has permits to do with his boat docks? That's all taken care of?
I will defer to the developer on permits. Some of that does lie outside of the city of Sandusky's realm in terms of potentially ODNR, Army Corps of Engineers. The primary construction permits for the project are all in place, both through our planning division and planning commission, as well as building department. But in terms of the specific status on the boat docks and the shoreline stabilization, I would defer to the developer on that.
Which is fine. And the reason I ask is that, if I'm not mistaken, $770,000, $750,000 of this is boat, the boat dock portion of the project? Is that, was that what the number was?
Uh.
It's a significant, the biggest proportion of this, and our grant is based upon that. And so I would have expected or would have been, felt a little more comfortable if we were certain that that was going to be what was, was going to happen. If Army Corps or whatever changes that, then your calculation of how much we should have given this, for this grant becomes a little difficult, a little different. So going forward, those kinds of things I'd like to see looked at closely, because money we give to one developer or say we're going to is money that doesn't go elsewhere, that could be used otherwise in between, in the interim. So, thanks.
To the chair, to Commissioner Poole, the figure you referenced was actually for the building construction.
I'm sorry.
So the shoreline stabilization is a smaller component, but still a significant component. You know, unfortunately, in my experience, those costs only go up as the regulatory agencies are involved. So, you know, that's, that's a number that I'm certainly comfortable and expect will be met, if not exceeded, when we verify at the end of the project, line by line, all of the costs with this developer before any funds are dispersed.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
I think in one of my discussions with Mr. Holliday, one of the things he found attractive about this project was it takes development out of the downtown and into a different section of town. And the other question that I wanted to verify is, none of our money goes in until the project's done, right?
To the chair, to Commissioner Pajali, that's correct. We do not release any of our funding until the project is completed, and we know that the project costs, as originally presented, have been met. And I appreciate you mentioning that, because I do think an exciting component of this project is that this is an investment in an area where we've not traditionally seen this type of investment. The area is zoned for this type of investment, but there has to be someone that takes the first step, and this really could be a catalytic investment for that particular area, which is, as you mentioned, Commissioner Pajali, outside of the downtown. So we're seeing the investment expanding in a broader area throughout the city.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I wish to be clear to my colleagues and the public that I've had no role in discussing this with, on not a single occasion with any of you, with any of the staff members or the applicant, encouraging the applicant, or doing anything else. It's just the nature of being in part of a large Irish Catholic family. You end up with a number of second cousins and so on, and some of them are second cousins once removed, but sometimes not far enough. So I will be abstaining on this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. I, I know that oftentimes in these economic development grants, we, we seem to constantly reference projects as transformational in the city, and that's what we look for to justify our, our participation, our 10%. Are they transformational? This is not a Hoggree structure downtown. This is not the Fight Building downtown. But I can assure you that this opportunity, this restaurant bar opportunity on River Avenue is transformational to that neighborhood, to that street. And it sure as heck is transformational to the 12 people. They're going to get a job out of this. So that, that kind of satisfies my requirement for the funding that we're providing and following the recommendation of the, of the economic development part. Thanks, Mr. Holliday. Ms. Myers, you call, roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
I'm staying.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
I'm staying.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
I'm staying.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to expend the funds for the purchase of a synthetic ice rink from Global Synthetic Ice for Oldsmar, Florida, for the Jackson Street Pier, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt this ordinance in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Werling, we're getting a little better ice, a little bigger ice rink, I understand. Questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I simply say that I, you know, I really think this is a good development. This is not being paid for by the city, of course. This is from donated funds. And, you know, the rental of the ice rink last year was, was small. Wasn't to the scale that we needed. I think staff realized that and got good feedback from the public that it needed to be somewhat larger. And this is going to be a circular design, as indicated in the communications to staff. So I, I think this will be, I think this will be exactly right. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing this.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Just a single question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
The information indicated we needed to get a trailer for this. Could you get some input on what that's going to be like? How, you know, how much, how big? Where we're going to put it when we get it?
Through Commissioner Brady to Commissioner Poole. The trailer would be needed to store it in the off-season and also be able to use it. So if we want to take the skates out and use those at Whitman Weaver, the ice rink at Whitman Weaver Park, we'd be able to transport those skates. They come on a big, basically a cart. So when we have the real ice at Whitman Weaver Park, usually January, February, sometimes late December, depending on Mother Nature, we'll be able to transport those skates. And since it's a synthetic ice rink, we could set it up for a special event, even in the middle of summer, get, get skating when it's 80 degrees outside. That's a possibility with this rink as well. So the size is going to be contingent on what, how big the rink is coming in on the pallets. We're getting an idea from the, from the designer and the vendor on what size we're going to need for that. And it should, I think our estimate was anywhere between $15,000 and $25,000 for the trailer for that part of things. And then we would bring that back to you for approval.
How heavy is this skate rink?
I'll have to get back with you on that.
The only reason I ask is, and I'll just, I'll be, I'll be quick. The trailer, this is a full project. The trailer, the ice rink, what you're going to do with it, where we're going to store it. Would have been preferable to have all that in front of us. I mean, because it just, the questions come because, okay, we need a trailer. Clearly, you aren't sure what the trailer is going to be, what it's going to cost. Next question is, do I have a vehicle to pull it based on the size that you don't know what it is yet?
Sure.
And so, and I only say that just for, for future concept of, if you, I don't like asking all these questions.
We have an idea.
But you bring incomplete, incomplete projects.
Sorry.
So I have much choice. Okay, but thank you, and this is good. Thank you for the answers, and I did call you ahead of time to tell you what I was going to ask, so.
And we do have an idea of like a car trailer size, depending on how many pallets it, it comes on, because it's also the dashboard boards and all the pieces of connecting.
It's like, I need, I need a trailer soon, and then I need a big diesel vehicle to pull it. I'm, I'm trying to project what you didn't tell us yet.
So we, we definitely have the trailer to pull, or the vehicle to pull the trailer. That would be what we use for the stage and what we use for the screen on the pier as well.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Murray.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
The, the rink we had last year, we rented that rink? Okay. I, I thought I saw that somewhere, and I was going to, if, if we had purchased it, I was going to ask if there was any salvage value in that, but I guess that's, it doesn't matter.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call, roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number four, please.
It is requested a resolution be passed approving the submission of a grant application to the Ohio Lake Erie Commission for financial assistance through the Coastal Resilience Grant Program for the study at Lyons Park, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadding.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Snyder, can you tell us what we're doing with this grant?
Sure. So this is a new funding source from, new funding source from the Lake Erie Commission. They're looking for projects to help protect the shoreline. Manager Whupser tossed this grant out, and, and we had conversations internally about, hey, what, what would be a good fit? And so the, the shoreline area in Lyons Park has already been flagged as a coastal erosion area by ODNR. So right there, we've already got in our pocket that, that it's kind of a hotspot, if you will. We've done some recent projects to try to help shore it up with some revestment, some, some large stone. However, this is, is looking for something more permanent, something that, that will take the, the highs and lows and the wave action. And our hope for this is that we'll even review the breakwater that's in, that's still in place and see the viability of that or, or ability to, to build off of that, if it's in the correct position to, to protect that shoreline. And so, of course, the ultimate goal would be what the 2009 Lyons Park Master Plan had, which was recreation of a beach there, a recreational beach. But we need to know it's protected before somebody goes just throwing sand in there. That's, you know, that's not, that's not a beach. So first thing first, we're doing the study. That's what this grant's for. This was recommended in 2009 out of the master park, master plan study. And so we're really kind of following through on what was suggested 13 years ago.
But it moves rather slowly. Mr. Murray?
Mr. Murray.
Mr. Whupser?
Just through the commission president, I just want to build on what Mr. Snyder, the real Mr. Snyder, said. And by the way, it was his idea when we threw the grant out to really dive in on Lyons Park, but I wanted to, once again, credit Commissioner Waddington, who I know, you know, over a decade ago, really highlighted the ability to think about, or the idea of thinking about Lyons Park in a different way. And the city has consistently, every several years, made investment in Lyons Park since that master plan was adopted in 2009. But we have always had the goal, and we have consistently heard from the community that they'd love to see a swimming beach restored there. And it isn't as if we don't support that, it's just that we need to make sure it's practical. And this is one of the ways that we can ask and answer that question as to whether it is practical. But I wanted to thank Dave for that early vision and Josh for, as we, you know, there's so many jump balls that we get thrown as to what could be or couldn't be a project for these grants.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a professional design services agreement with OHM Advisors of Cleveland, Ohio, for the Sandusky Skate Park Design Development Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
I was waiting for the only member of the commission who's young enough to be able to use this to make the motion. But absent that, I will make a motion that we adopt this legislation pursuant to Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
I don't typically make motions, but thank you for that.
Just FYI, you will not see me out there.
Then a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
I think this is really important. There's been a whole group of really intensely dedicated users of that park. I think it's right that it should stay in the same place. And I think it is the time to make a reinvestment in that. It gets a lot of use. I see it as I drive by. And so I know some people, you know, if you get to be older, you're not looking at using a skate park. And I was kidding about that a little bit. But maybe, I don't know, maybe you do want to use a skate park, Ms. Brady. That's more power to you if you do. But there's a segment of this community that it serves. We need to continue to make investments so that Sandusky is welcoming to lots of different folks and lots of different ages and demographic backgrounds. And I think this is just important. I know a young man who, when he was a little bit younger, enjoyed this a whole lot more than he does today. He's busy working and doing all those things you do when you get a little bit older. But he certainly enjoyed the time that was available to him at that skate park. And this passes, right? I mean, so there's a group of kids, young adults, who might be total of 10 years in span. But they hopefully enjoy that period of time and then remain part of our community.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bajali?
I looked over the literature that I believe Ms. Blair sent out, and I was just amazed by some of those designs. I mean, they were really creative. And just to look at what they do with those skate parks, I won't be using it, but just to go down and check it out when it's done, it's going to be fabulous, I think.
Additional comments, Commissioners? I think that the people that do use it are probably small in number in relation to 25,000 residents, but they are a vocal group, too. And I think over the years, they've gotten our attention. I think this is serving a very small segment of our residents, but I think it's really important that we serve that small segment. And it occurred to me, and I don't know if someone told me this or perhaps I read it, but I think the reality is, you have to go several miles to find another skate park if you pass Sandusky. You might have to go 25, 30 miles. I'm not certain that that's going to be a huge tourist benefit, but it really is something to say that we're on the leading edge of that. And I think we can all be proud of that. And I think that should be and is important to most of us. Ms. Myers, you call. Roll on that motion, please.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole?
You might be right, but I'd be shocked to find out that we had fewer skateboarders in Sandusky than we have ice skaters.
I don't think, if I made, did I make that comment?
You said it was a very small group.
I just said it was small. I didn't say there were fewer than ice skaters.
Well, the point is, fine, thank you.
Honestly, I don't know what the number is. I drive by there, and I see seven, eight, or 10 people there, which is okay with me.
This is a great, this is a good expenditure of funds for folks that have been very patient with what we provided to begin with. And I just hope that we're going to build, just as you say, something that will draw a lot of people to and just says wow about our facility.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bajali?
I would encourage everybody to take a look at what Ms. Blair sent out, because there is a wow factor there. I mean, it's really impressive what they do with that.
I asked her to send them out.
Oh, yeah, you did. You did. I must credit Mr. Poole.
Put together a good team. Ms. Myers, you call. Roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a managed services agreement for subscription license for Barracuda Essentials Complete Protection with Computers at Work Incorporated of Naples, Florida, DBA Vitaeo for the city's emailing system and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Harris?
I move that we adopt this ordinance under suspension and rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call. Roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his city manager report.
A brief report tonight. Thank you to the commission, audience, and staff. I'll start with Public Works. Fall cleanup will take place at Oakland Cemetery on October 3. All decorative items throughout the cemetery will be removed and disposed of regardless of their perceived value. Please remove anything you wish to keep prior to October 3. A single decorative item that meets regular guidelines will be permitted per space from October to mid-April. For questions, please contact the cemetery office at 419-627-5842. Residents are also reminded that the final two-yard waste drop-off days are scheduled for Saturday, October 8, and Sunday, October 9. And for community development, Sandusky is pursuing a grant from the T-Mobile Hometown Grant Program. The project for which we're seeking a $50,000 grant is the redevelopment of Sproul Park, an AmVets ball field and playground. The city will be renovating and updating Sproul Park and AmVets and playground location during 2023 and 2024. The park renovation is being spurred by a $30 million expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, which sits adjacent to the ball fields. The ball location's been redesigned and will be relocated as part of the overall project. Further new seating concessions and playgrounds will be erected. Support from T-Mobile will augment this effort should we be successful in being awarded the grant. The submission is 9/30/2022 with an award announcement later this year. And we'd like to request approval from the commission to apply and accept these funds.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. No objection. The motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to take any comments or questions.
Comments or questions for the city manager? That was brief, Mr. Webster.
I know. I just read what they give me, so it's a...
Items of old business, Commissioners. Any items of old business? Items of new business? Commissioners, any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Harris?
I'd just like to take a moment, really to just give thanks and to my AmVet team. We were actually, back on Tuesday, September 20, the Minority Business Empowerment Team won an international award. AmVet took home the Silver Award in Economic Equity and Inclusion for the 2022 Excellence in Economic Development Awards from the International Economic Development Council. There's actually only about 25 recipients of this award or this honor. And again, I would just love to, you know, take this moment to give a huge thanks to my team, all of my co-chairs, and the fine folks over there at Erie County Economic Development. So thank you.
That's cool. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm pretty certain that this is not an item of new business, although it is new to all of us and breaks all of our hearts. Probably belonged in my remarks, opening with the convocation. I want to acknowledge the loss of Vince Donald, the Perkins Township Chief of Police, who died unexpectedly on Friday. I have known Chief Donald for almost 30 years, going back to my days as a owner of an apartment complex in Perkins Township where he provided security almost on a daily basis. Terrific loss to that community and really to all of our community. So I would ask, even though it's perhaps not in the right order, I would ask for a brief moment of silence for Chief Donald and his family. Thank you. Additional items of new business, Commissioners? I do have an item of new business. I was approached about two months ago by a friend of mine, Ann Magooki, who represents the Kiwanis Club of Sandusky. And Ann approached me with a request that the city consider partial funding of a program called the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. Since that two-month request, I have provided all of you with some specifics, some executive summary, and quite a long, long report, a 23-page report on a, I believe it was Warren County somewhere in Ohio, that substantiated the positive impact of that effort. And what that effort is, as most of you now know, is an effort to provide a book for every child that we can get signed up, or that they can get signed up from the ages zero to five, a book a month. In other words, 12 books a year. And the concept of that program is relatively clear. It is, the sooner that you introduce young people to reading, it does a lot of things. It prepares them for kindergarten. It makes them kindergarten-ready. That's the short term. Long-term, what it does is it has a significant impact on their lives going forward. People that learn to read and are exposed to that type of environment early in their lives tend to graduate from high school more often. That means they make a little better income. Maybe they go to college. They get a better job. They become better citizens. They're less of a burden on society through the judicial system. They're less of a burden to society in the welfare system. Those are all things that I think benefit us as a community. In the entire Erie County, we have 2,300 kids from the age zero to five enrolled, as is usually the case in these kind of programs. Sandusky is the largest beneficiary in that we have around 1,300 of the 2,300. And the cost to do this in dollars and cents, to me, seems inconsequential. But it costs $25 per child to do that, to provide them with one book a month, 12 books a year. Of that $25, half of that, $12.50, is provided by the state of Ohio. And good reason for that is that the governor's wife, Fran Dewine, has promoted and provided some arm twisting, as wives often do, to see that the state of Ohio provides the $5 million to cover half of that cost. The remaining cost, the other $12.50 per child, becomes what you call the local match. What I'm proposing, and what I'm proposing for this commission's consideration, is that this city reach out and provide half of that $12.50 local match for the 1,300 kids that we know are enrolled from the city. That's a cost of about $8,400 a year. And because raising money is an ever-evolving process and a time-consuming process, I would suggest to this commission that we consider doing that for a five-year period, to provide that each year for a five-year period. And to some that would say, how does this opportunity get overfunded? Or is this opportunity overfunded? I don't think that can be the case. I'm certain that the 50% amount that the state of Ohio is putting in to fund this, it may not always be there. We have a friend in Governor Dewine's wife now. He may not be in that office forever. So that funding can and will perhaps someday go away. So this has the opportunity to not overfund the program, but to provide a buffer for when that program does really need more dollars into it. I think it's a small price to pay for the large benefit that comes out of a program like this. Ms. Magooki is here with us this evening to answer any of your questions. I've provided you somewhat of an overview by email to each of you. I've talked to several of you about it, and I would welcome your questions. I think Ms. Magooki would welcome your questions also.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Wadding.
I'll support that and hope we get a second here. I think it's great. If you can read, you're not going to go firing life. And I think it's going to have a big impact over the next few years to help out. So I support this, and thank you for sending all the information I've read up on the charity of it. So I think it's a great idea.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Wadding.
I will second that, but I want to take an opportunity to note that this is a drop in the bucket of what's needed. And to a certain extent, the Dewine administration is putting lipstick on a pig here. What we really need to do is we need to provide universal preschool education and a full day of kindergarten. The state does not do that. They pay for a half-day kindergarten. It's not enough. We're not getting to these kids enough. Because we do such a poor job in the state of Ohio, we get a great return on investment. But if this were properly framed as part of a much larger, comprehensive educational, early educational process, we'd be producing better citizens. We would be allowing more women in particular to get back into the workplace, and it'd be a much more equitable solution. So I support this because the state isn't doing what it should, but we should do this.
Fact. Certainly support that. Thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Poole?
What he said.
What he said, okay. That's a third.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Bajali?
You know, we support other things. We support money for food programs. We support money for housing. I kind of look at it as the continuum of care. This is just one more piece of that continuum of care, and I support it.
Thanks, Ms. Bajali. Additional comments, Commissioners? Now I'll entertain a motion. Can I have a motion to move forward with that?
So moved. I made a motion.
And we had a second? A motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call. Roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That motion is passed. Additional items of new business, Commissioners? We will turn to audience participation on any item concerning city business.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. I just want to go back into the original agenda on item number four and number five, which is the skate park and also Lyons Park. It's about time, I guess, is what I want to say. I know government moves kind of slow, but I guess it's always, the phrase, it's always better late than never. But the real happy dance is going to come when both those projects are finished. The shoreline at Lyons Park has been an issue for a long time. If you all recall, there was a time when we sloped that shoreline right down to the waterfront, and over the years, you know, major erosion. And right now, we're back into almost the way it was before with placing pretty rock along the shoreline instead of ugly-looking rocks. So hopefully, this grant that we're getting from the Lake Erie Commission shows that we can do some work there and create a beach into the future. And again, like I said, the happy dance is going to be when that project is completed. Same way with the skate park. We had a great meeting here about a week ago. Had probably anywhere from 15 to 20 participants, young and old. There are still older people that still skateboard or use their scooters, so that was good to see. When I looked back through history, I did see that the last time there was some formalized type of meeting, you know, from this body or the city manager was in 2016, so that's been six years. And Lyons Park, as I mentioned earlier, it's been 13 years. So it's about time, and thank you very much for, you know, spending the money to look into both those projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Additional comments or questions for the audience? Now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We're adjourned.